We call the regular City Commission meeting of Tuesday, December 9th, 2014 to order. May we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, we missed you last month. Scott did a wonderful job, but I'd love to have you call the roll.
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. The first item is a public discussion, items not on the agenda. Please say your name and address.
Suzanne Levin, 9 Maywood. I love living in Pleasant Ridge. I love its historic designation, its classic beauty, its neighborhood with families and children, and I'm finding it very disturbing almost every single day that I cross from coming from the gym where I just came from and cross Woodward from Oakland Park onto Sylvan, especially now, even being Jewish, the gorgeous decorations, and see a very, very scantily clad woman in the window of our yet-to-be-opened tanning store. I don't know if anything can be done about it. I don't think it meets our neighborhood and family standards to have that in the window there. I don't think that a tanning studio, especially one at the corner of Sylvan and Woodward, gets a lot of walk-in business and needs that kind of advertisement in the window. It's not Ferndale on the Fringes, or Berkeley, or someplace where there's lots of foot traffic. I just find it extremely disturbing to see that picture there. And, I mean, I wasn't even happy with the idea that a tanning studio was going in there. I don't think it fits our standards as a person who practiced medicine for many years. I think they should be outlawed. In fact, practiced oncology, they should be against the law. Tanning booths are cancer causers. Why they're legal still is beyond me, but there's a lot of things that are legal that shouldn't be. I just think it's horrible. I'm not a prude, believe me. But there's a place for butts, and I don't think the corner of Sylvan and Woodward in Pleasant Ridge is one of those places.
Thank you. Just for clarification, it is a picture.
It is a photograph, right. Yeah. I mean, you live on that side, but you probably are, if you ever...
I haven't swung by since the picture's been up, so...
But I do that, you know, very often. Many times I come in, if I'm coming from the west side, I do the alleys. If I'm coming off the expressway, I do the alleys. Unfortunately, my husband has been in the hospital, either at Beaumont or Woodward Hills, for the last three months. I have driven down Woodward a thousand times in the last three months and done my turn there. And again, when I come from the gym, I go across. And I see that, and it is really disturbing. And everyone on the west side, if they want to go north, they're doing that turn. And I just find it, it's not us. It's not what we're about. I mean, like, we should all pitch in and put a nice little neighborhood coffee shop in there or something. It's just disturbing to me, really disturbing.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Stempian. I'm with Romano Law Firm. We're right over here, 23880 Woodward Avenue.
Right across from Scamp.
Yep, right. I get to look out my side window and look at this picture of the tanning salon, yes. I did present a letter to the members of the commission. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to see it. We brought it by yesterday. And I came here tonight just to kind of introduce myself and kind of let you know who we are. And I understand that there's been some discussion with the residents along Sylvan between Woodward and Indiana about parking and the parking along the street there. What I've come tonight to do is to really to ask that, you know, that it be inclusive, that we be asked to be part of the process if there's going to be any further discussion about what the situation is along there. I mean, as you know, this building was constructed, I don't know the year it was constructed, but it was constructed some years ago, you know, obviously with the full approval of the city and at the time with the amount of parking that's provided. It's a fairly large footprint of a building for Pleasant Ridge. I'm sure it's one of the larger single-use buildings within the city, and it was approved with the amount of parking it has. And, you know, clearly there is a little bit of a deficiency with regard to the parking. And so that is an issue that we would have to address, and, I mean, clearly, we wouldn't want to be punished for having purchased a building within the city in, you know, that was approved as the way it was, although we, you know, we'd also like to work with the neighbors because we don't, you know, we're, this is our neighborhood too. And we're in that neighborhood, so we want to be mindful of any concerns that the neighbors might have as well. So if there is going to be any further discussion, I don't know if there was a town hall, we're just kind of hearing things sort of secondhand, so I'm not sure if there was. But if there is, we would just ask if you could just please let us know. We would like to be part of it, so we'd like to be part of the solution to that, okay?
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Very much.
Rob Sack at Fairwood. Would you like to have a con...
No, 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 come back, come back. This is for you.
Okay.
This is for you. Being a Fairwood resident, I walk my dog in the morning. I go by the law firm when they're all coming. They first park on Sylvan. The Fairwood parking lot is generally half-empty. There's a couple people regularly who do use the Fairwood parking lot, but the law firm does not use their law parking for their attorneys. They use the residents. Sorry, but this is, well, this is a vote. Residents don't get their leaves picked up when there's cars parked there during the day. They don't get their snow plowed when there's business parking on the residential streets. They don't get the streets cleaned. They're not afforded the same services that a lot of the other streets are, Second Block or where there's no firms. But I would like to know why your attorneys or your employees don't use the parking lot that you have. It's generally always empty. And I don't think you should be entitled to anything. You're a business in the business district. This is about residents protecting their rights because by you, your firm.
If you don't mind, just to address that briefly, I mean, the parking lot, it does have limited spaces. We have a lot of other attorneys that come to our office, and our clients especially. And particularly, we need to leave the six or seven spots that are on the side there available to our clients. There is parking along Woodward Avenue there, but that Woodward Avenue parking, of course, you have Cork Restaurant, which uses a significant amount of parking, and they also use a significant amount of the parking of that public parking lot there on Fairwood.
They're close, but not at any one.
But our employees do in fact use that lot. We use everything available to us. We have employees that park in that public lot. I mean, it's a large building. There's 28 employees we have that work there. And the building supports it. In fact, it could support even more. We just, but right now, it's approximately 28 employees. It's just the way the building was built. I mean, I pointed out in my letter, part of this is that Pleasant Ridge has an urban feel to it. It's a bit of an urban community within a suburban area, and that's kind of what you get when you have buildings that are up close to the road. It's just, this isn't unique to the city. I mean, the business community is part of the community. I told you we want to be part of the solution. We're not here to, I'm not here to confront anybody. But the fact of the matter is, is that there is a requirement for us to have some public parking available to us in addition to that public lot that's available over on Fairwood. Otherwise, it just doesn't work. I mean, you know, I point out in the letter, we purchased the building with the idea, or we didn't, the firm's a tenant, but the owner of the building purchased it with the intent, you know, the purchase price, part of it was that there's public parking available. Otherwise, the value of the building wouldn't be there because you'd have this giant building, you wouldn't be able to put anybody in it. You wouldn't be able to have any employees in it. So, again, I, not here to debate. I just, I really want to be able to have a, maybe if we have to have an open discussion about it, we'd be happy to join that.
Yes, Jim.
I was going to do this during the manager's update, but maybe now is as good a time as any to just give an update on where we're at.
Talk about where we're at.
With the permit parking process. So, we did have the town hall meeting. That was on November 20th. And anybody who lived on the east side of town was invited to it, residents only. The idea here is to create a permit parking program that residents on particular streets could opt into. So it wouldn't be something that the city would establish and say, "You are now in permit parking zone." Basically, what we're doing is creating the ability for streets to petition the city and request permit parking for residents in the residential districts on their street. So that's an important distinction. Where the residential districts start is where the permit parking program would be available to them. The permit parking zone would be a distance of probably 700 to 800 feet from Woodward. So you measure 700 feet or 800 feet from Woodward into the residential street, that's the end. The beginning of the permit parking zone is where the commercial district ends and the residential district starts. So unrestricted parking would stay in all the commercial districts on the side streets so that first 100 or 200 feet along Sylvan, Fairwood, Amherst, all of them would be unrestricted available for business parking. Now, the importance is that this is an opt-in program, that residents would have to opt in. And two-thirds of residents within that permit parking zone would have to petition the city and ask to be included in the permit parking process. So the solution here is easy. If there is a business that enjoys using some of that parking, don't create a problem. And then the residents won't ask for permit parking because permit parking is an annoyance. There's no doubt about it. It restricts some of the rights that residents have. If they have visitors, if they have more than one cars, if they have somebody to come over, they have to get, deal with guest passes. It's an annoyance to residents. So if a street decides to opt into a permit parking program, it's because there's a bigger problem. There's a bigger annoyance than the permit parking program. So you, as a business owner, have an incentive to work to solve the problem. If Sylvan organizes and asks to join the permit parking program, there's an easy way for you to make sure they don't do that. Don't cause a problem for them. And I'm not saying that you are causing a problem for them, but we hear the complaints from Sylvan. So I would suggest that it would be a good time for you to honestly approach those neighbors and convince them through deeds, convince them through being a good neighbor, that they don't need to take on the annoyance of establishing a permit parking program. You talk about availability of parking. We've done the analysis. Where do we get that 700-foot or 800-foot number from Woodward? Well, you are in our business district. Nowhere are you more than 350 feet from a public parking lot. We have the one at Wellesley, and then we have the one that's at Fairwood. And in addition to that, there are public parking spaces all along up and down Woodward. And many businesses, such as yours, have some spaces available in private lots. So between the private lots, between the spaces that are available on the side streets off of Woodward, in the business district, and in our public parking lots, if you do the parking analysis for the entire district, there is enough parking for all of our businesses. The issue we find right now is that many customers, workers, choose not to use the public parking that's along Woodward because it's more convenient for them to simply park on the side street next to their business. So it is an issue of convenience, not of availability. So there will be parking for all of the businesses. We understand that that's an important thing. We have to take care and make sure that our businesses have places for their workers and their customers to park. So we do have the parking available if permit parking is requested by certain streets. So where are we at? We are in the process. Our city attorney, Greg Neede, is going to be working on an ordinance amendment to basically enable the creation of a permit parking program. We'll be putting together the administrative policies that kind of set forth how a street would opt into that program and then going forward with it in the coming months. So, you know, we're not creating it. We're not saying anyone is in the program or that you have to do permit parking or that we're creating permit parking everywhere on the east side. This is merely a solution that's going to be available to streets where a problem exists to the point that the residents are sick of it enough that they want to take permit parking on for themselves. So that is the summary of where we're at, and I don't know if I left anything out or if there's any questions any of you had. I'd be happy to clarify anything you have now, but that's the summary.
I didn't come here for this, but, and it doesn't affect me really. I live on Maywood, and even though those condos are there and there's the bank, it does not affect my life. However, I have children who live in San Francisco and children who live in Evanston just north of Chicago, in very residential areas of both those cities, not in commercial areas. And in their neighborhoods, both of my, our kids, they have times that are up on signs that say, "You can't park there." It's the street cleaning day, it's the leaf pickup day, it's the snow cleaning thing. And it's like every Tuesday morning from 9:00 to 11:00, you can't park in this spot and every whatever. And those signs are all over San Francisco and all over Evanston. And maybe it's something we need to think about in that way. The people who aren't getting those kinds of services, it might be something to consider, some kind of a schedule that, you know, it's not wonderful if you happen to live there, but if you, where my kids live in Evanston, it's very, there's always cars up and down. But there are certain days, you know, you've got to have that car out of there by 9:00 in the morning because they're going to be coming through. So that's just a suggestion that I happen to...
Just, why, I had a clarification I was looking for, but I would like to, you know, but I just have a pretty strong disagreement with the availability of parking. The lot on Fairwood is full a lot of the time. I mean, it is full, and obviously, we're not using it that, I mean, we are using it, but only some of us are using it, not all of us. I mean, my biggest issue is the fact that, the issue, and not anybody on this commission, but the issue was created by the city because of the approvals for that building at the time. So you guys approve a building with the parking in the square footage, and then you say to us, "But you got to figure out how to park." If you can convince me that there is sufficient parking on Fairwood, I'm not sure where the Wellesley lot is that you're referring to. Which one is that?
Sam Wells.
It's a big lot.
It's got a brick wall around it?
It's a big lot.
It's free.
Okay. I'm trying to picture it. I don't know which business.
It's just north of you, a couple blocks.
Oh, north of us. Okay, okay, I'm looking the other way. Okay, okay, north of us, okay. I'm just trying to think what's south of us, okay. And I'll check that out. I'll look into that.
It's not Pleasant.
But I don't, the Fairwood lot for sure is full, and that is. And so that's my big, and that continues to be my biggest concern, is that this was not our making, but yet we're being told there's an issue. I don't know what the residents have said. We weren't at the town hall meeting, so I don't know what the nature of the complaints were. I mean, you say to us, "Well, be good neighbors." I don't have any evidence that we're not, because we weren't there. But if, you know, if there's an issue, yeah, sure, we can address that with the neighbors and find out what their concerns are. And I would certainly like to see what the ordinance is going to be at the, you know, I'm not sure what the timeframe looks like in terms of when it's going to be the first reading and all that, but I would certainly like to have an opportunity to take a look so that we can, that we can address that at the time. You said this is an opt-in program. Is this citywide or is this going to be designated for a specific area?
Beside any street along the east side.
Okay. So you're designating that particular, just that?
Because that's where the business, yeah.
Because that's where the business district is at? Well, there's businesses on the west side though, too, but some that must not be the same level of use.
Those are automotive service. I mean, it's a coil change.
Yeah, they're not the same use. Yeah, you have a different level of use, yeah. And not the coming and going like the, you know, the medical and all that along our side too, so. But keep in mind, I mean, I just asked the commission to keep in mind, you know, we're here, we're, you know, we do bring in, obviously, business and tax dollars, but it's not just about dollars and cents. I'm not just here to say, "Oh, yeah, we're a bigger taxpayer, so we should get more consideration." That's not my point, but we are residents here as much as anybody else. So I think that, again, this being something we moved into, not something we created, that I would ask that you give us some due consideration in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. I would suggest, I would suggest it might be a good thing for you to send a letter to meet with people who live in that first block of Sylvan and honestly listen to their concerns.
Okay.
And you might be able to head off them opting into the program.
Yeah, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question for Jim. So this is going to be an ordinance that would be proposed in the near future most likely. Am I correct that there'd be a public hearing associated with that?
Of course. It would likely come for introduction in January, and then it would proceed to public hearing in February. That's the timeline. Thank you.
I guess, Mayor, if I could, I would just extend my appreciation to Mr. Stempian for coming out tonight and putting out the offer of cooperation with the residents. I believe everybody on this commission recognizes our businesses as members of this community, and, you know, we want to be supportive of all the businesses along our Woodward corridor. But as you mentioned, you know, there's opportunity for your actions to display your commitment to that ideal. And what Jim suggested, I think, is a great start to really extend that offer to affected residents and start that conversation in a real honest way. I would encourage you definitely to participate in the process as we go forth on, you know, potentially adopting this ordinance, and just as your opinion is valued, you know, the residents' opinions are going to be valued as well. So I definitely invite you to participate, and I encourage you, like Jim suggested, to really reach out to those residents and, you know, listen to their concerns.
Yeah, and I live on the second block of Sylvan, so, but I wanted to also say that even at the public meeting, we heard from a number of streets, a number of people with issues. But I do think it is, it is the idea of businesses and residents working together. Everybody wants to see the buildings full. We're happy to have the law firm there. It's good to see that that building isn't empty anymore, that it was filled. We want to make sure that we reach out and maintain our businesses, but we also want our businesses and our residents to be able to, we don't want that kind of conflict or people thinking that the businesses don't care. And I think there are plenty of good options, and I think that the residents would be very happy to talk. So I think that would be great.
I don't want to belabor.
Yes, go ahead.
Point, but...
You can belabor it.
You, Mr. Stempian, you brought up the issue of the buildings being approved. Actually, these buildings all predated the redesign of Woodward. They used to be angled parking on Woodward. And when they came through and did a lot of improvements and widening, improvements and widening to Woodward in the past, we lost the angled parking. So we lost about half of our public parking supply. So all those buildings were approved along Woodward with angled parking. So we had a lot more parking in the past. That's why the city has had to, at its own expense, build public parking lots to pick up the slack for that parking that was lost over time. So that's where a lot of the parking issues come from. We know that the parking is not signed as well as it could be to make people aware. Like you say, where's the Wellesley lot? You don't really see it if you're not looking for it. And I think a lot of people aren't even aware that it exists. So we're going to create a better signage system. We're going to create a better map and directory, you know, that we can make available for all the businesses so that you know and you can give it to your customers and your clients and everybody else. So we know that those are issues. Those are real things. That's all. I promise.
Thank you.
Are there any other, any other public discussion? Okay. Close the public discussion, move on to the next item on the agenda. Consideration of the receiving and filing the audit of the city's financial statements for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. Mr. Aaron Stevens is here to give us a presentation.
I promise I'll be brief.
He's coming.
All right, here we are. Just a couple of general comments. I'd like to express our thanks to Cheryl and Brian from Plant and Rand, as well as Jim, Amy, and the rest of the city staff for their courtesy cooperation and assistance. I did another presentation this morning. I'll reiterate my comments that I made there, and that is, we know we're a disruption to your normal work schedule, so we do appreciate all of the help that we receive while we're here doing fieldwork. Having discussed the report in detail just last week, what I plan to do tonight is highlight just the general fund financial statements, as well as a few of the paragraphs from the independent auditor's report. And so I've taken excerpts out of the report and put them into the slides here. So with that, the independent auditor's report is on pages one, room number one and two of the bound document, the full report. And as I said, I've included excerpts here. So this is the paragraph on management's responsibility, and it simply states that management is responsible for the financial statements. That includes the preparation and the fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. Our responsibility as your auditors is to opinions on those financial statements based on our audit. So it takes us a few paragraphs to get there, but in the, I believe it's the sixth paragraph in the independent auditor's report, we express our opinions, and based on our audit, we've expressed what we refer to as unmodified opinions. And I've italicized it there, that phrase, "Present fairly in all mature respects." That is the unmodified opinion. That is what you want to see as a commission, is that unmodified opinion. And then we get into the governmental funds, financial statements. The balance sheet is presented on pages three and four of the financial statement report, and then the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance on pages six and seven. This paragraph that you see here is a five-year analysis of just the general fund, total revenues, total expenditures, and total fund balance. And I know it's hard to read, but the blue bar represents the revenues, the maroon bar is the expenditures, and the yellow bar is the total fund balance. Total revenues for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014 were approximately $2,458,000, which is about a 3% increase over the 2013 revenues. Total expenditures were $2,597,000, which is an increase of about 6% over the previous year's revenues. So your change in fund balance is actually a usage of $140,000, approximately $140,000. And so your total ending fund balance at June 30th was $525,636. I have a pie chart that details the composition of your general fund revenue. Largest source of funds at 61% is, of course, property taxes, that is followed by charges for services at 19%, which has been fairly consistent over the years. And so in the next paragraph, I detail out the last three years here, and you can see that, I'm sorry, they're different colors on the pie chart, but taxes has been your largest source of revenue, and as I said, followed by charges for services, which is the yellow piece on this paragraph. So even though the revenues have increased, the composition hasn't changed all that much in terms of percentages. Now, the expenditures, the composition of your general fund expenditures, public safety was at 43% for the year, followed by general government at 24%. Again, in the next paragraph, the composition really hasn't fluctuated that much. Even though total dollars have increased over the last couple of years, the composition hasn't, hasn't fluctuated much from year to year. One of the things that we like to do, as mentioned previously, your total fund balance at June 30th, 2014 was $525,636. Portions of that total have been earmarked for specific purposes, and what is left as unrestricted or unassigned fund balance was $436,318. That $436,000 represents approximately 17% of your expenditures for the fiscal year. So that's where you're at. This line graph shows the relationship of unassigned fund balance compared to the expenditures for each of the last five fiscal years. And it's fluctuated some. You started at 23% in 2010. The high point there in 2012 was 30%, and now you're down to 17% fund balance in relationship to expenditures. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum fund balance of approximately two months' worth of what they call "normal" operations. So two divided by 12 is 17%. So you're right on target. This line graph here shows you in terms of dollars where your fund balance was in comparison to that target of two months' worth of operations. So while it's been higher in the past, it's at 17%, which is right in line with the GFOA's Again, that's just highlighting the general fund. I know I went through that very quickly, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A quick question for Aaron. That was enlightening to go through this presentation once in last week. The figure that you just gave, the 17%, you said that's the recommendation. Is that a recommended minimum, or is that a recommended amount to have?
That is a recommended minimum. Yeah, that's the, I'll call it the magic of that number. The philosophy behind that number is two months' worth of operations should be the cycle in which you, you know, you need to collect your receivables and pay your payables. So that two months' worth of cushion allows you the cash flow to cover your payables and collect your receivables.
Thank you.
But at the same time, we've gone from 30 to 17 in two years.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, do I have a motion to receive and file the audit report? Your Honor, I move the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year
ending June 30th, 2014 to be received and filed as recommended. Is there support?
Support.
May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item is consideration of the governmental reports. I don't see the schools, but I do see the police.
Fire TV.
No fire TV.
Going solo. Good evening.
You have plenty of time.
Sorry. So I missed you in November. And with that, I'd like to go back and, because I wasn't here in November, I want to do, express my thanks on behalf of the Police Department and the city for all the people that came out and voted and voted for the millage increases and everything for the parks and the general fund and Karen, the library and everything. That was well appreciated by everybody that works in the city, including the Police Department. News from the Police Department that we have, we lost one of our part-time officers, Officer Aaron Waring. Officially was done today. He took a full-time job with Plymouth Township Police Department, so we wish him well. But with that, we also promoted a part-time officer today, Officer Andrew Shelton, to the full-time spot that was made available and made me the chief. So we lost one, but we gained another. And the other things I want to do with the holiday, there's not really a whole lot going on to report crime-wise in the city. It's been relatively quiet, which is a good thing. But with that, one of the biggest crimes for the holidays that we see trending now, not here, but across the United States, is everybody shops online and orders things and it gets delivered. Well, those packages are now sitting on your porch, open to everybody, and the criminals now have changed their tactics. And they're now just driving around up and down the streets, they're following the trucks and watching packages get delivered, and they'll remove them. So our suggestion would be if you can make arrangements to have it delivered to the back or have your neighbor pick it up or be home, a lot of the services like FedEx or UPS offer where you can track or schedule times to have your stuff delivered. So if you haven't done so yet and are expecting packages, I think that it'd be wise to have it not delivered to your front porch. One of the other things is, especially with, while shopping, especially in malls or parking lots where you go, a lot of people, I know I found myself doing it, you buy numerous things and you go out to your car and, hmm, let's put it in the backseat. Bad idea. Try to put it, try to put it in your trunk, because they watch that also, and then they'll break your window and steal all your packages. But with that, they also change their tactics and they watch if you put it in your trunk and they wait for you to walk away and go back in, and they pry your trunk open. So I found myself moving throughout the parking lot, which is, could be a hassle, because now you gotta try to find a parking space, and you know how that is. So, but, or try to just take it out at once and then leave, so that thing doesn't happen to you. I know we don't have a snow emergency ordinance in our town. Would love to have one. It makes plowing the streets and patrolling easier when Brialar tries to plow. But if you could be mindful, remind the residents, if it's going to snow three or four inches, whatever, try to park in your driveway or whatever, be considerate. So I know.
It's not going to snow.
We, look, it's not going to snow. I, I was in the UP when they said that too, a month ago, and it snowed four feet. So.
We have the salt fairy.
Other than that, that is all I have for you today. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I don't see any other governmental reports. So we shall close that and move on to the next item, which is consideration of the city commission liaison reports. And we'll start with Commissioner Crisio with the recreation commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into recreation, I'll just echo what our chief said and encourage residents to utilize their driveways when it, when it's snowing out. One thing I learned is that when you do that and the snow stops and you eventually move your car, there's less snow for you to shovel. So there's that, too. So some upcoming events with the recreation department, we will have the toddler parent Christmas party, and that will be Saturday, December 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Please contact the community center if you're interested in participating in that. We will also have, in the new year, to kick off the new year, the 50-plus bingo night will be Thursday, January 8th, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. So look forward to getting everyone out there for bingo. Just some updates on the renovations to Gainsborough Park. Those of us who have wandered through that part of the city have noticed that the playground equipment has been installed, the area has been prepped, and the final part of the installation is the port-in-place play surface. There's weather requirements for that installation, so we're kind of playing it by ear right now. But hopefully we can get that in before January comes and, and it becomes impossible to apply. As far as the shelter, the renovations at the shelter are 99% complete. There's some more lighting that needs to be installed this week into next, and we are finalizing our program for the issuance of cards. That will take place after the first of the year, so you'll be able to get your card, which will grant you access to use the park shelter. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foreman, committee liaison.
Yes, since our commission meeting was pushed back a week last month, there's not been a school board meeting since that meeting for me to report on, but I do have a few follow-ups from things I shared last month. First, something that was shared by Nan Kerr Mueller, who was here, a member of the school board. She mentioned last month, starting next fall, which is 2015, there's a new Montessori program that will be added to our district, which will serve students from six to nine years old. The pilot classroom will run at Roosevelt, and it'll be run by a Montessori-trained and certified teacher. An information night is coming up. It's going to be held at Roosevelt this Thursday night, December 11th, at 7:00 p.m. for any interested families. Some may have heard originally that it was going to be held at Ferndale Montessori. The location was changed because there's a lot of interest in the program, there wasn't enough space there. So it will now be at Roosevelt for anyone that was interested and may have heard about the information early on but not gotten the update. Next item is to follow up on the Ferndale Education Foundation, or the FEF. I mentioned this last month, and I said I'd be giving information on the upcoming annual dinner. That is coming Friday, March 13th. It'll be held once again at Club Venetian in Madison Heights. The purpose of the dinner is to raise money for the FEF. And again, they create, grant opportunities for teachers to create extra opportunities for kids and teachers to have equipment that they don't normally have a chance to get in the schools. So it's a very good cause. The theme for this year's dinner is the Oscars, and that means you can come dressed as any of your favorite Hollywood celebrities, movie characters, paparazzi, whatever you think is appropriate. Just come and have a good time and have some good food and make donations. So they are looking for any donations from any business owners that might be interested in publicizing their business by donating goods, services, or gift certificates. If there's anyone in town that's interested in that, or anyone out of town that's watching that's interested in that, you can contact Mary Foreman, my wife. Her email is M-A-R-E-F-O-R-E at gmail dot com. Finally, an update on the Ferndale Schools website, which last month I mentioned has been completely redesigned. There's a lot of information consistently being added on almost a daily basis there. I'll just talk about a few quick ones. One is, there's an area that is just pertinent to the superintendent. Not only is his contact information there, but he has a blog that he puts out on pretty much a weekly basis, and he does a weekly podcast. The links to all of those items are on that page. If you go to the district menu at the top and click superintendent, it'll take you there. Next, of course, I mentioned this one a lot, is the calendar. That's also under the district menu, takes you to calendar, which then you can press any date on the calendar or click it with your mouse or hover over it, and it'll show you everything happening on that day. Makes it easy for planning. And finally, under the community menu on the right side of the navigation bar, you'll find a link for the Ferndale Education Foundation, or the FEF, as well as PTA groups and others. So that is it for my report this morning.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, Commissioner Perry, planning and DDA.
The planning commission and DDA met on November 24th. The planning commission recommended approval of an ordinance that would allow for accessory dwelling units in certain circumstances. Will be considering setting a public hearing date for the ordinance tonight. That's us, the city commission, will be setting that. They discussed having a non-resident member who is a business or property owner in our business district to serve on the planning commission and DDA. This will be considered by the city commission later tonight. And then the comment period for the master plan ended on December 3rd. The planning commission will be reviewing the comments that were received at their December meeting. The DDA also met, and the city manager put, put out a call for projects to the capital, for the capital improvement plan. And these are projects that are over $10,000 that the commissioners would like to see considered for the city. The next meeting will be on Monday, December 15th, at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. It's been moved up a week, back a week, so that, due to the holiday, the next week. Thanks.
Commissioner Scott, historical commission.
Yes, I wanted to thank Commissioner Foreman for attending on my behalf. I was out of town on business. Just a couple of updates. First is our upcoming speaker series on January 15th to talk about the 25th anniversary of I-696. Our resident, John Wright, is setting that up, and I hear we've got lots of great information and some photos of the condition of, of the Ten Mile Road prior to the existence of I-696. So it should be a really fun evening for everyone. Plan to meet up at our community center and have a good time on January 15th. And the only other one is, our next meeting for the historical mission, commission is January 7th. So if you would like to attend, everyone is welcome to attend.
And what time is January 15th?
I think it's, is it 7 o'clock or 6:30?
Seven.
Seven, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone? All right. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the following consent agenda. I will read the five items and then ask for a motion. One, consideration of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, November 18th, 2014. Consideration of the monthly disbursement report. Three is consideration of the reappointment of Ms. Kathy Gillis, Mr. Don Hoffler, and Mr. John Wright to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, terms to expire December 31st, 2017. Four is consideration of the reappointment of Mr. Sean O'Brien to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission Downtown Development Authority, term to expire December 31st, 2017. And the last is consideration of the 2015 federal poverty guidelines. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved as recommended.
Support? Support. May we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item is consideration of the proposed Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2015 Community Application and Subrecipient Agreement. Before I open the public hearing, would Jim or Amy, do you want to say anything about this?
This one's Amy's. I thought it was Amy's. It's her name. It's like, you don't have to say anything about it if you've done this before.
Okay, quickly. The city is eligible for $5,000 in community development block grant, CDBG program funds, administered through Oakland County, and these funds ultimately come from HUD. There are certain programs that we're allowed to use this money for, unfortunately or fortunately. The city of Pleasant Ridge does not have a low, moderate income area in it, so we're restricted in the amount of programs that we can do. The program that we're recommending is the Public Services Senior Services Program, and it helps offset the cost of some of the, the 50-plus dinners that we do, the field trips, workshops that they hold. And it also helps to offset some of the costs of Scott and Bridget administering that program. So the first step is to hold the public hearing. The city commission adopts a resolution to approve the application, the subrecipient agreement, which just says that the city would like to participate in the CDPG program with the county. And then we send that up to the county, and we wait for funding.
And this is basically what we've done, the programming and how we've used the money has been the last couple of years, right?
We've done this for the last four years.
Four years. Since it came back to $5,000. All right. Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing, solicitation of public comments. All right. Close the public hearing. Now I will move for a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that the Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2015 Application and Subrecipient Agreement be approved, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Will we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is consideration of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Again, we will have a public hearing, but this is something that Jim is going to fill us in.
Yes. Before the public hearing, I think it might be good for me to run through the ordinance and just talk about what is proposed. For anyone in attendance here tonight, there are copies of the ordinance on the table to the left of the police chief, to my right of the police chief, if you're interested in following along. But basically, the amendments that are proposed are some adjustments to better, I guess, reflect the existing developed and built character of the town. Currently, we have a lot of one-size-fits-all standards in our zoning ordinance that don't necessarily fit the reality of what's built on the ground. The first example I'd point to is our, our minimum setback requirement. We have a 30-foot minimum front yard setback requirement for the entire city. And this completely ignores the fact that we have 15 and 18-foot setbacks on many streets on the east side. So we've created, basically, everybody's house is a non-conforming house on the east side of town. And then you move to the west side of town, and houses on Oakland Park are set back 45 feet, and houses on Ridge are set back 120 feet from the street. So we create a situation where somebody could come in and build a new house that jutted out in front of all of the existing houses. One of the defining characteristics of our town is the fact that we do have very clear established building lines. All of the houses on streets are lined up together. They, they, they all come to the same point. So what we're proposing is to replace our minimum front yard setback requirement of 30 feet with an established building line requirement. This is an example of a generative code, and that's a fancy term for saying that the requirements for your particular lot are generated by the context in which they sit. So the neighboring houses inform and, and set what your requirements are for what you can build. So in this case, if you have a 15-foot setback, while your neighbors are set back 15 feet, you can build at 15 feet. We've had numerous, numerous variance requests for houses, particularly on the east side, to simply match their neighbors and to match what was existing on the house that, you know, was not down to, to permit the new house. So taking this, this context of what exists around and using that to inform the development on your property is this generative code example. And so the minimum front yard setback requirement is one of the things that is being amended. The other is reducing the maximum height of accessory buildings from 18 feet to 15 feet. And I should note that our measurement is measured to the midpoint of the roof, and that's defined as halfway between the eaves and the ridge. So our 18-foot maximum height for accessory buildings means that you, we can have garages with the ridge of the roof at 27 feet tall. So that's, that's basically a house that we're allowing in the backyard. And we'll talk more about this when we get to the accessory dwelling units section of the, of the agenda tonight as well. But basically, when you allow a garage that that's tall, you're just asking for accessory dwelling units to be constructed in it, because you've just allowed for a complete second story above the garage. So we're proposing to lower the maximum height for accessory buildings. And this is, this is, we did some comparison. This is right in line with what Birmingham, Berkeley, Royal Oak, Huntington Woods, what all of those towns permit. So this is a very common height for accessory buildings. We are proposing to, there's really two, two amendments that are related to each other. We are establishing a side yard, sky plane setback requirement. And I'll get to this in a moment. But this is basically restricting development in side yards. Bigfoot houses is a, is a topic, is something that comes up quite a bit. Birmingham experienced massive bigfoot housing development, where they knocked down a small old house and build a big new imposing one, where they basically max out what they can build on the site. I'll get to some graphics in a moment that, that illustrate that. But what we're proposing to put in place is the first step towards addressing the potential for those. Let me pull up that. We have another presentation. So basically, in a side yard, sky plane setback, what happens is at the property line, and this X is a, is an X in the graphic in the zoning memo, because the, the height that you measure this point, this 45-degree angle from, changes depending on where you are in the lot. But what But what happens is, from the property line, you go up a certain distance, and then at that point, you measure in 40, in a 45-degree angle. And any new houses have to stay within this sky plane. Because what happens in some Bigfoot housing instances is that the houses loom over the house that's next door. They build it up, and it's very tall, very imposing, and, you know, ensuring an adequate supply of light and air is one of the keystone things that zoning was created for. So this is an example, and we created the numbers in the ordinance based on testing of actual houses in town to make sure that we had dialed in the numbers correctly. But this is an example of a sky plane measure. Where there's a house next door, you go 17 feet above the property line, and then you start measuring in at 45 degrees. And here you'll see that there are some gable ends that penetrate through the sky plane. That's okay. That's permitted in the ordinance. Gable ends can protrude up to eight feet in. So this is okay, because this is not a massive building structure that looms along the entire property line. It's a small architectural feature. But this is what the sky plane does. It makes sure that new housing is compatible with what exists today. This is a cubic model. Our setback requirements, our maximum building height requirements, all of those come together to basically create a three-dimensional box on every lot within which you can build. So this is your front setback. You have side yard setbacks, and you have a rear setback, and then, of course, you have your maximum building height. So you take that box, and that's the box in which you can build your house. So what you'll see here is, this is the practical effect of these side yard sky plane requirements, is that it chamfers off the edge of that box to basically make sure that this house has, you know, some retained access to light and air, and is not loomed over too much. One of the other things that this ordinance does is that behind the house, 10 feet behind the neighboring house, where you measure that sky plane point from, it drops to 10 feet above the property line. So if you're building an addition back into the backyard where there are no houses, and one of the things we have in Pleasant Ridge is we have very common front yard building lines, but we also have very common backyard building lines from the original houses that were built. There are pretty consistent rear yard lines. Now, we're not trying to limit additions off the back of houses, but by measuring from a 10-foot point above the property line where you measure that side yard sky plane, this helps to limit a massive addition going back into the backyard and basically having your neighbor build a house that looms over your backyard at two stories, very imposing. There's a couple of examples of this in town, and it is very oppressive. So this 10-foot is a first step towards putting some protections into place that will help us to avoid some of the egregious problems with Bigfoot housing. There are some other things that we can do, that we're not proposing to do at this time, because we don't want to go too far. We want to encourage people to reinvest in their houses. We like building additions. You know, houses change and have to breathe over time, so allowing people to stay in place in Pleasant Ridge is a goal of ours. But we want to make sure that additions are done in a sympathetic manner, and this is where that contextual design comes from. So this is our first step towards protecting ourselves against incompatible Bigfoot housing. These regulations that we're proposing are a starting point. They can certainly be dialed in further over time as we gain experience with them, to find out if we've gone too far in one direction or not far enough in another direction. But this gives us the chassis upon which we can really kind of make sure that our zoning is doing what we want, that it's working for us and that we're not working for it. So of course, one of the things you might be looking at is, well, we've just basically reduced the buildable capacity on a lot of lots. So one of the things we're proposing to do is on our smaller lots, in our R1C and R1D zoning districts, and these are where we have minimum lot areas of 4,500 and 5,500 square feet. We're proposing to increase the maximum lot coverage from 30% to 35%. And again, we benchmark this. 30% and 35% are both very common numbers that are used in zoning ordinances everywhere in Michigan. So by going from 30% to 35% for smaller lots, we're fine. We're still aligned with what Ferndale and Berkeley permit. Birmingham has a 30% maximum lot coverage, although I think they hand out variances pretty much on demand there, from what I've seen. And Huntington Woods is at 30%. But their lots are generally not quite as small as some of our smaller lots, so there's more land area that they have to cover. So that's why we're proposing to increase that lot coverage, so that we can spread out a little bit more horizontally to allow for these additions without going vertically, which is really the thing that looms. Bigfoot housing, it's the mass of the building in three dimensions that typically is the problem we have. So that is the overview and the summary of the zoning amendments that are proposed. I think that's a pretty comprehensive overview. If anyone wants any detail on any of the very specific line items that are in here, I'd be happy to clarify or answer anything. And John, you can take a break. Thank you.
Well, I've been studying the plane, the sky plane. I just want to say how much I appreciate the fact that this is something that is not in Michigan, but that you've been able to bring this from other parts of the country. You know, these are concepts that obviously are new, and I think quite, I'm quite impressed. I like that whole idea, because I've seen a lot of looming. And what that can do to cut off backyard, you know, your whole garden changes immediately, and much less your life. I think this is quite excellent.
Thank you. Boulder, Colorado is my go-to place for zoning.
Boulder's good enough for me. It's all right. Is there any? Yes, okay. Now, with that background, I will open the public hearing to discuss the ordinance changes. Anybody? Okay. Two.
I have a question.
Please, come forward. Name and address, please.
Spirit Eliger, 37th Deventhyre Road. It's not really related to the building, but it just brought to mind, we've noticed the trees are seeming to, we're cutting back on our trees on the east side really hard. Does anybody, have you noticed that? No? How does this relate? I mean, is anything being done? It's just, I wasn't even planning to say anything tonight, I just wanted to familiarize myself with how these meetings went. But since we're talking about this quality of life in terms of our building projects, is there anything, has anybody ever mentioned or talked about that at all?
Can you clarify what you mean by?
I don't know if there's anything that we can do, but I feel like something that's so special about our city is this tall tree, the tree height. Ferndale doesn't have it, and it's, if you look at the two, if you look at like the bottom of the east side of Pleasant Ridge, it's the only difference. The houses are the same, but we've got these trees, and I don't know if it's on anybody's radar.
Are you talking about trees on private property or the public street trees?
Well, I guess we can't really do that much about trees on private property. I don't know if we can, but the public trees as well. I just heard a lot of trees coming down this summer relative to other years that I've lived here. And I just feel like it relates, and it relates to our property value and our quality of life.
Right, I agree.
That's it.
Do you have any other?
Sure, please. I mean, that's an absolutely bang-on observation. They've studied this a number of times, and I've talked about this in the past, but 15%, a mature tree canopy gets 15% of property values. So it's measurable. You know, there is a benefit to having it. And the city, we have not been able to invest in street trees, maintenance, or planting in recent years. That's one of the things that we are looking to do now that the millage has passed, is to get back to that, because the best time to plant a tree was 50 years ago, but the second-best time is today. So we need to start renewing our tree canopy over time. There's no question. So we're going to start doing that. You know, we've got some catching up to do. We're five or six years behind, so it's not going to happen overnight, but we will start to do that. Huntington Woods has been through a fun process. They actually enacted an ordinance that regulated cutting down trees on private property. I don't think that's somewhere we want to go, but, you know, we can look at what we can do to encourage maintenance and care. I think one of the things that attracts people to Pleasant Ridge is the mature tree canopy, so ideally, people would invest in that themselves over time. So hopefully, we can encourage rather than, the carrot, not the stick, in this case. So we're aware, and we'll do everything we can.
Thank you. I've also noticed that our older tree canopy is getting a little run down, and there's a lot of maintenance that a lot of private property owners need to do on trimming some of those dead limbs that sometimes you're watching and waiting to fall on your house. But I know that the whole tree canopy and talking about investing in trees, that was one of the guiding principles for the tax, you know, thinking about how can we start to do that, just like sidewalks and other things, these kinds of maintenance things. So, thank you. Any other comments? Good. I will close the public hearing and move to see if, do I have a motion for approval?
So, Your Honor, I move that ordinance 407 regarding the amendments listed on this agenda item 10B related to the Charter 26 zoning of the Pleasant Ridge City Code be approved as recommended.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Will we take a vote?
Can we have a discussion?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Yes, please.
Thanks.
Sorry.
That's okay. Jim, you answered a lot of the questions that I had and everything. Thank you very much. Because the, you know, especially looking at the smaller lots and, you know, how that moving from 30% to 35% really affects those lots, because I look at, you know, I'm in the middle of one of the smaller lot sizes, and so are a bunch of my neighbors. So just looking at adding that extra, you know, 5%, how that can, you know, like you said, our backyard line, you know, have a very common line, sightline as well, and so how that could start to eat into that. Do we have any concern that we're going to start to push it towards, you know, because people always push it a little further than what, you know, the requirement is. You know, an architect is going to help enable that and everything, too. But, you know, pushing it towards 37% to 40% lot coverage.
If that's the case, I'd have to ask for a variance. I think the fact that we amended the ordinance to reflect the fact that people wanted to add out of their houses, and we gave everyone 5% more lot coverage puts us in pretty good stead to say, no, you know, whatever variance is requested. So ultimately, it's just on us to toe that line. You know, there's really no reason, all of our lots are pretty much the same in town, so when you look at the practical difficulty criteria for granting a variance, you know, what is it that you need 37% as opposed to 35%? And it's very hard to make that case on a lot coverage basis. So it's really just incumbent on us to be good stewards of the zoning ordinance and to not start to erode it by granting variances.
Okay. And then, do you feel, do you think it'll add, it'll change sort of the feeling of these streets, that they would feel more congested or, you know, just more congested with the size of the lots already?
The streets won't change.
Okay.
Because you're not going to be able to add in the front yard. This is opening up backyard additions.
And nothing on the sides?
Nothing on the sides. Our side yard setbacks are staying the same. So, you know, the streets are going to be what they are today. The place that this will potentially add a little bit more congestion is in the backyard, and that is the trade-off.
Okay. And then we'll, you know, and I know we're addressing this with the sky plane side yard setback requirement. Do you feel that that's going to do enough to help offset the whole Bigfoot kind of concern?
Like I said, it's a starting point. The 17-foot number, where you're next to another house, that number is very dialed in, because we tested it on existing houses in town.
Okay.
The 10-foot in the backyard, that's a starting point. We did some tests, we, you know, ran some models, and, you know, that'll be something that we have to gain experience with and adjust as we go.
And I think we have some unique situations, too, like that Kensington reconstruction, that it was sort of a lot and a half, a lot and three-quarters type size. And then, so now, the house that's on that lot is, you know, more than double the size of anything near it. So how does it affect, you know, can people buy two lots, and then, so sort of some of these things go off the?
Yes, I mean, if people buy two lots, give themselves more elbow room, that opens up a lot of possibility for them.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Are there any other?
Sir Mayor, I have a quick one regarding the established building line setback requirement. You mentioned that we've seen examples of this, where a resident wants to build or rebuild a home, and they want, just to build it at the level where the rest of the homes are on their street, but they need a variance to do that. That's something I remember from the Maywood situation back earlier this year, and I think this type of thing will help avoid that, because to me, it's kind of needless to have to ask for a variance to get something that all of your neighbors already have, and that really is the established pattern. So I think that's really a good step in the right direction. I wanted to thank you for that. Also, the sky plane side yard setbacks, these visuals really helped me to kind of put this abstract concept into a real tangible form and understand it a lot better. I had drawn some pictures and stuff, and I thought I understood it, and this really helped a lot. I think it's a good happy medium for us, and like you said, it can be dialed in later, and that's a comfort to me, that we can always look and adjust as needed. I think it's a good place to start. So again, thank you for all the effort and research you put into it.
Are there any other, any other comments?
Mayor? A quick question on the exact drawing that you have up here. I imagine the sight plane applies to both sides.
It does, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't bother to chamfer it off on the other side.
Okay.
You're right, it would be.
Mayor, I guess I would only add that part of the thinking on adoption of these ordinances were an acknowledgement that, you know, some of the homes in the east side in particular are smaller in size, and for growing families, you know, who may be looking for that little extra room, that this 30% to 35% is a consideration of that fact, and, you know, would encourage residents who maybe would have just packed up and left town to maybe look at investing in redevelopment of their current property and stay in the neighborhood. Because I've had conversations with residents who adore this community and want to stay in this community but are just sized out of their current home. So I think this is a great way to address that and concede that, you know, in some instances, adding on in the back, you know, will keep families here in Pleasant Ridge. And that's why I think this would be a good amendment of the current zoning ordinances. So I appreciate your work on this.
Anything else? I think we can take a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisier?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, the next item, we'll also have a public hearing attached to it, but it's consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 2 of the Pleasant Ridge City Code Administration, Division 9 I-696 Segregated Capital Asset Fund, or as we often term it, SCAF. We've gotten a lot of information, but Jim, I'd like you to kind of fill us in on it.
Sure. Let me frame this one. And I see Don Gillis is sitting back there, and I've actually met with Don and former Mayor Castelli as we've gone through this process, vetting this. But we introduced this idea back in September. It was the concept of reclassifying part of the existing SCAF fund to open up investment options for ourselves. There's an amendment to state law in 2008 that allows the city to create a Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund. And that fund can be invested under the pension fund rules. Under Michigan law, local governments who have excess monies can only invest them in certain very short-term and very liquid investments. And right now, those investments are paying about 0.7% interest. So you lose real value on your money every year, because inflation runs at 1.5% or 2% and your investments are getting 0.7%. You're losing value practically. So we have this segregated capital asset fund, which was given to the city as part of a settlement for I-696 when it came through and some of the land that was lost. And for a long time, it operated like an endowment for the city. And the interest it generated was used to supplement the road millage so that we could, in some years, we rebuilt two roads instead of one. It was throwing off $150,000 or, in some years, $180,000 of interest in the late '90s and up through the middle of the 2000s. Well, now, it's throwing off about $40,000 of interest, and it's, you know, losing value over time because it's not keeping pace with inflation. So with the ability to reclassify a portion of the segregated capital asset fund as a Parks Special Revenue Fund, we could then invest that in the broad market, basically stocks and bonds, which, over the long run, gets between 6% and 8%. That's your annualized return. We do take on some low-level risk of short-term market fluctuations, which could cause some loss of principal value, but over the long run, it's been that 6% to 8% return. That would open up a lot of possibilities for us. One, you know, we would continue to treat this as an endowment, so we wouldn't dip into the principal. And you'll see that some of the things that we're proposing to amend in the SCAF ordinance is actually that we grow the principal equal to the rate of inflation over time, so that our, you know, our endowment fund is growing equal to inflation, so that over time, we protect our investment and continue to grow it, so that we, you know, we're not diminished by inflation. and continue to grow it, so that we, you know, we're not diminished by inflation over time. So that's the basic what it is of what we're doing. So the ordinance amendments before you, again, there's copies on the back table if anyone wants to take one with them, and the changes are highlighted in here. Section 2-131 Establishment, we're just adding the fact that we're creating this Parks Special Revenue Fund under terms Section A of Public Act 20, which is the act that governs what governments can invest in. In Section 2-135, Use of Interest, and we're proposing to change that to Use of Interest and Investment Returns, because of the additional investment opportunities that will be available to us, we're adding a section, a new subsection 5, which I will read, and this governs what the revenues from the investment of the Parks Special Revenue Fund may be used for. And that is, dot, 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 "For operation and maintenance of the city's recreational properties, including, without limitation, salaries, wages, benefits, and employer pay and employment taxes for the recreation director and other employees of the city's Parks and Recreation Department allocable to parks' operation and maintenance, general maintenance and repair of the community center building and swimming pool, general maintenance and repair of other park properties, including irrigation, lawn mowing, fertilization, and maintenance and replacement of landscaping, general maintenance and repair of all recreational facilities and equipment within the community center or any city park, supplies used by the Parks and Recreation Department, and promotional and other expenses for recreational programming." So this is what establishes what we can use these revenues for. The amendment to state law is very broad. It's not limiting, it's very open. We've had a lot of discussions with the city attorney, Greg Need, about that. So this was put into place to basically guide ourselves for what we could spend that SCAF money on. Then, in Section 2-137, which is Invasion of Principal or Diversion of Interest or Investment Returns, one thing I'd point out here is that this new Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund has all of the protections that exist today for the use of the principal of SCAF. When the city commission enacted this ordinance, which I believe, of course, Don, you were a part of, there were a lot of protections put into place to make sure that it would be hard to basically spend the principal. Protect the principal, spend the interest. That's the whole thing. Keeping all of those in place, that's going to apply to this Parks Special Revenue Fund as well as the, what I call, regular SCAF, which is actually classified as a special revenue fund in our audit already, so it already has that status. But we're adding new subsections 2, 3, and 4, which state, and I'll read subsection 2, "The principal," this is all new language, "principal balance of the Parks Special Revenue Fund shall be added to over time by means of retaining interest and investment returns generated by the fund at a rate that exceeds the annual rate of inflation to preserve the Parks Special Revenue Fund's value in perpetuity. The interest and investment returns generated by the fund in excess of the rate of inflation may be used to support the city's Parks and Recreation operations and maintenance." Now, Section 3 deals with a unique circumstance, where we could have some periods of loss, where market fluctuations, you know, the market goes down, then it goes up, then it goes down. So we could actually drop below our corpus value of $3.24 million because of investment fluctuations. So this section covers that, and it states, "Should, due to market fluctuations which impact the value of the principal, the Parks Special Revenue Fund's principal value fall below the amount established by the city commission by resolution upon its initial funding, plus any future additions to the fund by city commission resolution, adjusted for inflation, only interest or dividends shall be removed from the Parks Special Revenue Fund until the market value of the fund's principal recovers and is higher than the amount established by said resolutions, adjusted for inflation." And then finally, Section 4 says that, how do we define inflation? Well, "For the purpose of this section, inflation shall be measured by the United States Bureau for Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers." So every year, basically, we'll recalculate what that value of SCAF is, the principal value, adjust that up, do the calculation for where the nominal value is that year, and then budget accordingly. And that is the overview. So I think, unless there's any commission questions...
I do have a question. Question, Mr. Mayor, if I could? The section you just read, item 3, pertains to the addition of interest to keep up with inflation. So I'm reading this, and I'm just not making, I want to make sure that this is what I'm assuming or gathering from it. So let's say we have, and this is a fictitious number, let's say we have $1 million as our principal or our corpus. Let's say we add $100,000 in interest, which is a crazy amount, let's say we add that much. Does the bar now raise to $1,100,000, that we cannot go below?
No, it's the rate of inflation. So say the rate of inflation was 2% that year, it'd be $1 million, and I'm going to do math on the fly, always dangerous, but that'd be $1 million times 2% interest, which is...
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars, thank you, math guy. You do math on a daily basis probably more than I do. So it'd be, your new corpus value would be $1,020,000. So then, with that $100,000 of interest, you could then spend that $80,000, should you so choose. And you'd have to retain $20,000 to grow the principal balance.
Sorry, I should have said that more clearly. So the amount that we're contributing to protect from inflation, is that the amount that stays preserved?
Yes.
We cannot dip below that without a four-fifths vote?
That would be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the commission?
Sorry, one more. Where is that stated in here? Is that in this Section 3?
Yes, that is, that is Section 3.
So the part about adjusted for inflation, or, I want to make sure I'm catching the part that represents that specifically.
Right, it's, "Should the Parks Special Revenue Fund's principal value fall below the amount established by the city commission by resolution upon its initial funding, $1 million, plus any future additions to the fund by city commission resolution, adjusted for inflation." So that is where that is.
That's the piece?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Can I hear them? Open the public meeting, public hearing, I'm sorry, on consideration of the amendments to the Pleasant Ridge City Code.
Cat Church, 46 Oxford. Who will be overseeing the investments?
Good question. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to address questions now?
Oh, please. Why don't you do that now?
The city has an investment committee, which is made up of the city treasurer, the city manager, the city clerk, and then whomever the city commission appoints to that committee. So in the past, it's been Mayor Castelli and the aforementioned city staff members who oversaw that. So it would be creating that same oversight body.
Okay, and I do understand that the principal won't be touched, correct?
That is correct. I should also add that it's not in the ordinance, but it is in the investment policy that lays out what we can invest in. And basically, it's only securities that are traded on a major United States index. So you hear sometimes pension funds invest in some guy's business, and we're not, that is not at all the intent. The investment policy sets forth a narrow set of instruments that this could be invested in. And, you know, my intent is to keep this very simple, to invest likely in just a market, you know, a stock market and a bond market index, getting the whole market. You know, we're not trying to pick sectors, we're not going to get cute with this, because, you know, it shows that you can beat the market two or three years in a row, but then there's always reversion to the mean. So just invest in the mean and, you know, call it good. So that's how it would be invested. The investment policy is in the city commission's packets, it's available online if you want to look at that. The investment policy, the amendments to that, we'll look at later if the ordinance goes through.
First place, I'd like to indicate that I commend the city manager for the job he's done. He's put an awful lot of time into this, and I think he's done a highly professional job, and deserves our appreciation for all of that.
I hate to ask, but just for the minutes, can you give us your name and address? We all know.
I'm so famous that...
Well, we know.
I'm at, geez, I forget my address.
It's 6 Norwich.
6 Norwich. One of the problems that I have in making my own investments is that I've been diagnosed with advanced dementia, and the diagnosis was made by my wife. But I do have some comments aside from the compliment I've paid to the city manager, which is heartfelt. And the comments that I have won't take too long, I think three or four hours should do it.
All right. We've got time.
One of the things I'd like to mention is, one of the reasons for this proposal stemmed from the fact that the limited investments that we're able to make, apart from the Parks and Maintenance statute, are very limited and have produced terrible returns for quite a while. They functioned well for a while, but have really turned sour, it's just the investment situation as it presently exists. One suggestion that I do have that should be considered by the investment committee, is, I think you all know, our investments under SCAF are managed by the Oakland County Pool, and the financial advisor is the Oakland County Treasurer. I would like the investment committee to pursue whether a change shouldn't be made in that. There are private firms that I think, and I have evidence, could do a better job. It's a function of cost of the management of the fund, together with the return it's produced. The return has been poor, and I think, as I say, I have evidence that it could be done more cheaply and I think more effectively. Of course, nobody on the investment committee that makes any recommendation, I assume, will be pure and receive no beneficial aspect of recommending that firm, at least not without full disclosure. So that's one recommendation I think that should be looked at. I don't think we're bound to the Oakland County Pool. The next thing that I'd like to discuss has to do with a meeting that was held on October 22nd of this year, with the city manager, the assistant city manager, Mr. Castelli, and myself. I mention that meeting because some of the other matters that I'm going to discuss relate to that meeting. At the meeting, I asked the city manager for a list of all the parks that he felt might be beneficiaries of the sub-fund. And I had a reason for doing that. And my reason is that when the meeting, the meeting resulted from a lengthy exchange of emails between former Mayor Castelli and the city manager, in which I got copied. And I got copied for historical reasons. And before the meeting, I have an office with a lot of dictionaries. Some of them fit into a bookcase, but others are large, and they're established dictionaries, legal dictionaries, as well as ordinary English dictionaries. Some of them are so big they're on a stand, and they have to be kept open. Others weigh more than I do. And they're all over the place. When I looked up the word "park," and I concluded that there were some definitions of parks that would not qualify as property that we have in the city of Pleasant Ridge, which we call parks. And there's, as I say, a wide variety of definitions. And that made me believe that I ought to get the city manager's definition, or list of what he regarded as a park. And he didn't provide that, list he didn't have it. And he hasn't furnished it yet, but he's taken a different approach, which I think is sound. He might as well seek the broadest possible interpretation under the sub-fund statute. But on account of that, the lack of definition under the act itself, and what the manager had in mind for it, I select, I indicated to Mr. Castelli that we ought to get the views of the Michigan Attorney General. And the city attorney has mentioned a lot of things that I think Castelli and I both knew. The attorney general is not our counsel, he's, represents state officials. Not only that, his views are not binding on us or on the court. The city attorney's view is not binding on the court. But we ought to get some idea of what the state had in mind when they talked about a park and maintenance of parks statute. And I should also mention that there was probably some confusion about what the purpose of getting the views the attorney general were. Mr. Castelli has raised a question, which I think has been adequately answered, relying on something that happened in Madison Heights, and whether that might impact whether we were even entitled to this new statute in terms of our investments. I had, personally, I didn't think of that. I had no, my position is that we were clearly entitled to use this Parks and Maintenance statute. But I did feel that we ought to get some idea from the state, maybe because the attorney general had notes of committee meetings where the statute was adopted, and other sources, maybe from the Michigan Municipal League. Somewhere, we would find a definitive explanation of what is meant by parks and maintenance of parks that we don't presently have. I agree with the concept that's been adopted by the city manager in the interim, which is very, very broad in terms of both maintenance and what constitutes a park. Some of it seems to assume that recreational property is automatically a park. The definitions that I've perused through these dictionaries don't indicate that that's uniformly true. And of course, it's understood that the attorney general can say, "I'm too busy and I don't want to deal with you." But he might be able to furnish some information, you know, committee meetings or something, where something was said about this, and I think we ought to have it. Because it would be awkward if we had a definition of parks and the maintenance of parks that may be contested some kind at some time, and it may turn out that we suffer some consequences that we were not expecting. I like the idea of making our definitions as broad as possible, but if we can get something from the state would be helpful. And if not, we belong to the Michigan Municipal League, don't we? We want to get some action from them, particularly in the case of Pleasant Ridge, for reasons I'll mention later. Now, that's different from Mayor Castelli's, former Mayor Castelli's concern about the Madison Heights situation. That was never my concern. I'm completely satisfied that we have the right to use that statute. I'm completely satisfied that we have the right to use that statute. I'm concerned about something called a primacy issue, as to what the status of SCAF is as compared with the sub-fund. Second question that I asked the city manager at our meeting was, how much did he want to take from SCAF to put into the sub-fund? And his answer, which was somewhat disturbing to me, was, more than 50%. Obviously, what he had in mind was, we have a benefit of a broader investment spectrum, and we ought to put as much money as possible in that. But it's kind of open-ended, and I still don't know how much you're planning to put in, or whether that decision has been made, to take from SCAF and put it into this sub-fund. Because the city commission, the city manager, and Mr. Castelli and I all agreed in advance of that meeting that the SCAF was never intended as a Parks and Recreation Fund, never. It had a totally different purpose. And I plan to say a few words about that later on. And so I'm concerned about taking too much from SCAF, although I have a constructive idea about how to deal with that, that the commission may find acceptable. I was invited to attend that meeting because of my role as city attorney throughout the extensive condemnation case. And of course, I drafted the SCAF ordinance, and I had a very keen appreciation of what the city commission had in mind at the time. There was a reference in the ordinance that talked about the replacement of recreational property and the enhancement of the recreation program. And I'm here to tell you that that was lip service that was paid to that. The only thing the state took of city-owned property was a ball field, an unimproved ball field. And there was never, never, any effort to decide to convert funds received by way of the condemnation case to building a new ball field. The remaining sections of the SCAF ordinance really dealt with what the city commission had in mind. And that was the permanent effect of that condemnation on the city's tax base. The erosion of our tax base, taking us some vast number of homes, some 50, I think, and also the negative impact on some commercial property on the east side. And that was the main thrust. And it has been a permanent, I mean, you don't build those homes. They're now gone forever. And where there used to be homes, there's now a highway. Of course, the property owners got money for their homes, but we lost tax base. And so the issue of primacy and the potential aspect of using SCAF and any other fund that we have to help reduce property taxes, we have Heights property taxes here. Pleasant Ridge is a terrific community. We're in our third home here. And we have good citizens that rebuild their homes and modernize them. Then they, they get stuck twice. Their assessment goes up for that. So when we're told that we're going to take more than 50%, that concerns me. And I'm not saying not to do that, because at the present time, we can't do better in terms of our investments than we can with the sub-fund. I have thought about that, and I would like the consideration be given to this proposal. This is the dimension that's creeping up on me. But I think the way to handle our concern about what's prime is this. A simple provision that says something along these lines. "The Park Subfund shall be deemed a non-interest-bearing loan or advance from SCAF, which must be returned to SCAF in whole or in part, and from time to time, by the vote of the commission." Now, that doesn't do anything, really, in what you're entitled to do anyway. But by putting it as part of the ordinance, I think it helps to substantiate what I'm getting at, that we never want to lose sight of the fact that SCAF is really the primary fund, and may eventually, if we get the Michigan Municipal League to extend the investment opportunities that it has for parks into our fund that we got by way of settlement. Because one of the things that should be considered, whenever municipal funds are received by taking city property that's taxable, that should open things up for us as compared to what happened in our case, where we didn't have the benefit of that. So I also would endorse Mr. Castelli's, somewhere, making use of his comment to the effect that, as to allocation, if the proposal goes forward, I would suggest not exceeding a percentage that equals that percentage of SCAF interest spent to date on recreation purposes. In other words, we've already spent money for recreation purposes, and that should be considered as part of what SCAF has given up. With that, I would hope, of course, there are other things that can take place. The SCAF fund may return as the investment scene changes. We may be getting more money. We're in a certain spectrum right now that's not productive, but that can return. We've had times when it's produced over 100,000. Other things can take place that can make a big difference. For example, this statute available for parks and park maintenance may eventually, the type of investments that can be made for that may also be applicable, may open up for the other fund, SCAF fund. There's all kinds of things that can take place that will improve the situation. But I, I just want to get the thought across that, in my mind, the primary purpose of SCAF was to deal eventually with the erosion of our tax base, which is permanent. We can't ever get it back. And with that, I conclude my remarks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would also like to comment on the, the opinion letter of the city attorney, who furnished an opinion, a lengthy and carefully crafted opinion, affirming this proposal in one sentence. That's pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis.
Anything from the commission? Anybody else?
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd really like to thank Mr. Gillis for the time he spent writing up and doing the research, sharing his knowledge and wisdom with us on this matter. It was a very important perspective for me to hear that. I know that he's already had dealings with the city manager and other staff, but I haven't dealt with, I don't think we've dealt with, Mr. Gillis on this matter yet, so I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
It's good to have you back after the history lesson you gave us some time back. Any other comments? Okay.
Mayor, I would just like to discuss with the commission the possibility, in light of Mr. Gillis's comments, and to leave the opportunity for public comment to move approval of the ordinance to the month of January. I don't know if they would want to discuss that, but I would like to make a motion that I moved that the ordinance amends section two of the Pleasant Ridge City Code, Administration, Division 9, I-696, Segregated Capital Asset Fund be considered at the next regular commission city meeting to be held Tuesday, January 13th, 2015.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
May we take a vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, any discussion? Sure.
Yes, I just had a question. I know Commissioner Kruzak made the motion. I wonder if there's a possibility that we could build in something additional, if you'd be willing to amend. Basically, I'd like to add in there a provision that we would ask the city staff to secure a second legal opinion on the applicability of PA 404 to our situation, which Mr. Gillis referenced.
I'd be all right with that amendment.
Could you re?
So I have one, I think that covers, if you don't mind, if that's all.
Go ahead.
So I would read it as this. Mayor, I move to postpone consideration of the proposed amendments to the SCAF ordinance until the January commission meeting, to allow for additional time to consider the resident feedback that has been shared to date, and for city staff to secure a second legal opinion on the applicability of PA 404 to our situation. This will also allow for additional time for public review and comment.
Was there a second to that motion?
In this case, the motion may be a second.
I'll, I'll second that. Now, should I withdraw my previous?
Do you accept Commissioner Foreman's amendment?
Yes.
Yeah. Any discussion, any questions?
Just one point here. While I'm in favor of delaying 30 days, I am not in favor of the second opinion. And my vote will reflect that.
I've thought of that as, I've thought of that as well, and I do agree with Commissioner Scott, that I felt that the opinion, as even as Mr. Gillis said, was well, well researched, and I feel very, a great deal of confidence in our city attorney, that we wouldn't, that a second opinion would basically support what we already have.
And Mayor Finney, my reasoning is that I think the proposal is a low-risk proposal. So the risk to the city of the decision being altered by the state of Michigan or another body does not present a high risk to us. So even if the second opinion came back with whatever, I don't know that I would change my opinion on moving forward with it.
Fair enough.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor. And a second, may we take a vote?
Commissioner Kruzak?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
No.
Mayor Metzger?
No.
Do we need a four vote on this? This is just a?
Not this.
Motion carries. Okay. The next item is consideration of this discussion regarding a non-resident business or commercial property owner member to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission Downtown Development Authority. Commissioner Perry had mentioned that from the last DDA meeting. Jim, could you just give us a little background on that? This is just a discussion item.
Right, yes. So we have an opportunity. I can get to the. Okay. Under state law, for a city of our size, we have the ability to appoint up to two non-resident members to our planning commission. We also have a situation where our planning commission is also our DDA. So the DDA, as formed, is supposed to improve and move forward our business district. So we have a situation where we have no business owners that are actually represented or have a voice on our DDA. So given those two facts, I thought it might be something worthy of consideration, that we look to reserve one spot on our nine-member planning commission slash DDA for a business owner in town. Now, of course, we do have a few business owners or property owners, non-residential property owners in town, who are also residents, but you can count on one hand, and you can't always count on getting one of them to step up and be a part of our planning commission. So setting aside one slot on our planning commission and DDA for a non-resident business owner would basically give a voice to the business community in planning and DDA decisions. Even on the planning commission, the planning state-enabling legislation talks about the planning commission composition being reflective of the various segments of the community. And of course, our business district is an important segment of the community, so there is some justification in the state planning-enabling legislation for that. Further, a lot of our site plans and business items that come before the planning commission deal with our business corridor. So I think there's benefit on both the planning and the DDA side for having that voice. We discussed this with the planning commission to get their input on this in, at the meeting in November, and we didn't have them vote on it, but they were generally in favor. We didn't have anyone who thought it was a bad idea. So at this time, we have two openings on our planning commission, one of which we would fill with a resident, like we would always do. And the other one, if the city commission is amenable to this, we'll shake the bushes with our business community and see if we can't find some, one or more candidates who are interested in joining our planning commission and DDA and providing us with their input. So this is a discussion item, really. We're not asking necessarily for a motion from you. You can make one if you'd like, but, you know, discussion will be fine, so.
No, I mean, my, my discussion is to hardly support the effort. I think we've long needed a business voice on the DDA and the planning commission. We haven't had that. There's been an obvious disconnect between our planning commission and our downtown business owners and building owners. Really no, no discussion, and a lot of our efforts in the parks and our concerts, there hasn't really been much outreach to the business community. They really have been kind of a second, kind of not thought of very much. And last time, we finally got Comerica and Cork, both were at the, at the last concert in the park. But I think it would be wonderful to have somebody who's from the business could start to reach out to other businesses. We've gone out and tried. I think the planning commission and DDA has talked about going to them, but I still think that there's really a, the business owners don't feel really connected to the community, and I think this would be, having a business owner representative who could then start to reach out, I think would be a great idea. I'd love to get two, but start with one, right?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask a question on this. I know this is still taking shape, but I wonder if there's a way to build in some possible sort of additional responsibility of a business owner that's on the peace, planning commission and DDA, that they reach out to other businesses in the district. DDA, that they reach out to other businesses in the district to kind of see where they're at, maybe meet with them quarterly, or kind of hold some sort of informal gathering where they can collect thoughts from more than just their own standpoint, but that of the larger business community. Just kind of throw it out there to see who might be open to that idea or something. Maybe just factor it in somehow.
I think they could help the planning commission actually understand how to reach out and start to invite. I think the planning commission, DDA as a whole, should be holding those kinds of meetings, should be...
That's better.
And I know they've talked about it, but I don't think they've really made any efforts to start knocking on doors and talking to, and I think that maybe a business owner could help them understand better how to start to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor? I think, you know, I've talked to a couple of the different people who've had some concerns about this issue, about the issue that the DDA, that the businesses have not been reached out to, and that they need sort of an ongoing communication method. You know, we've been very successful with having, you know, as a commission, reaching out to the residents with a coffee and things like that. So, I think there are some methods to try and see, you know, what kind of engagements the businesses would like, and, you know, and realize that they have an avenue, you know, to the city and to, like, their form of their governing, you know, group that can assist them.
I think it'd be nice for them to understand that there is a DDA.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of them are not aware, there is no really organized DDA as such. This would be a great opportunity.
Mayor, I would just say that I think we had an example earlier at this meeting, the benefit of having a business represented on our planning commission, DDA. I really see that as the proper forum for smoothing out some of those issues between residents and the business district. So, I think this would be a great opportunity to lay the groundwork and create the environment where those issues could be worked out in a beneficial way for both residents and the business community. So, I think this is a great step in that direction.
Well, we don't have a motion, but I think you get the feeling that we're all very supportive. The next item on the agenda is consideration of establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, January 13, 2015, at 7:30 PM, solicit public comments on the following. Have to read these?
No.
Okay. You go. Tell us.
Sure. This is a agenda item to establish a public hearing for two proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. And it's like two sides of the same coin. One of the things we talked about earlier with the first zoning amendment was the height of garages that we allow, basically out for de facto accessory dwelling units to be built in these garages, because our ordinance is silent on the question of accessory dwelling units. And in fact, we allow for servants' quarters in the ordinance, but we don't address the issue of accessory dwelling units. And so, that ambiguity in the ordinance has been difficult, because when somebody wants to build a garage that's two stories with a basically fully functioning dwelling unit in it and say, "Well, it's just a, you know, it's just an accessory building." We don't really have any way of saying, "Yes, that's fine," or "No, that's not fine." We're stuck in a difficult place. So, the planning commission considered two ordinances, one that would prohibit accessory dwelling units in our residential districts, and then the other side of the coin, one that would allow for accessory dwelling units in certain instances in our residential districts. And I say "residential" in certain instances, because they wouldn't be permitted by right. Anybody couldn't come in and build one. They'd be listed as a special land use, which is a class of use that's somewhere in between permitted by right and prohibited. You have to get special permission from the planning commission, and you have to meet certain criteria that are set forth in the ordinance in order to be able and eligible to have an accessory dwelling unit. So, that is the other ordinance. We brought both of those forward at the same time, so that it wasn't, so that it didn't appear, or there wasn't that we were pushing one side or the other. Truly, we just want to resolve this, so that we, as staff, know what we are doing and what our rules are that we can enforce. In the packet, there are some supplemental materials. One of them, I cited some very common pros and cons of accessory dwelling units. We are certainly not the only community in the world to deal with this, this issue. So, some pros of accessory dwelling units is that they do increase housing choice for elderly or one-person households. You know, a lot of our planning and development decisions come out of ordinances and needs that really were the '50s and '60s and '70s, when it was a very different world. Married households with children were over half of households. And now, single person and elderly or two-person households are by far the majority, and married couple households with children are less than a quarter of households now. So, we've built entire, you know, cities that are geared towards a living arrangement and a type of family that doesn't really exist anymore. So, accessory dwelling units, and, you know, we see it with the Silver Tsunami, or the, you know, aging of the baby boomers, where, you know, there's a need for housing for senior citizens and for elderly residents. So, accessory dwelling units allow for housing choice for elderly and one-person households, the responsive, the changing household demographics. They are a potential source of additional income for a property owner, and that is also a potential source of increased tax revenue for the city. So, you know, those are the pros. Now, the cons, of course, are you are increasing density. There is questions about the adequacy of city services to handle these accessory dwelling units, but we did used to have almost 4,000 residents in Pleasant Ridge, and now we have 2,500 residents. So, really, it's not a question of being able to handle all of the flushing toilets in our sewer system. We used to handle 4,000 people. We have 2,500 now. We have some headroom in our infrastructure. But privacy for neighbors, you're putting dwelling units in the backyard in accessory, you know, dwelling units. It would increase demand for parking and traffic. There could be some neighborhood character and neighbor objections, and then, of course, we do have to enforce these things. We do have to stand top of them to make sure that they're operated in a fair and manner that doesn't erode the character of the community. So, those are the pros and cons. Now, we've tried to address those cons in the proposed ordinance that would permit these in certain instances. We can put protections in place to address those cons. Can't make them go away. We can try to manage them. So, I think it might be useful to just run through the ordinance that would permit. It's not too lengthy, it's about a page and a half. So, I'll just summarize. But basically, the ordinance to permit as a special use would establish this as a special land use in residential districts, subject to some specific regulations. One being that the, there's only one accessory dwelling unit allowed in conjunction with an existing detached, single-family dwelling, and that the lot has to have a minimum area of 5,000 square feet in order to even be eligible to ask for this. The minimum or maximum size of the accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 25% of the gross floor area of the primary dwelling unit, or 750 square feet, whichever is less. So, the accessory unit has to be clearly subordinate and smaller than the principal dwelling unit. Location and design, the accessory dwelling unit can only be located in the detached accessory structure. One thing we don't want is people chopping up houses into duplexes, because the good thing about having an accessory dwelling unit in an accessory building is that if you can no longer use that because of violation of some of these other ones, it's a lot easier to mothball that. If you've chopped up the principal dwelling unit, you fundamentally changed the character from single-family to duplex at that point, and we don't want that to happen. So, by requiring these to be an accessory building, we can manage that potential. The ADU can't have an exterior entrance that's visible from the parcel's primary street frontage. The ADU shall be the only accessory structure on the property, so we don't want people to build two garages, if this is the case, one garage. And any detached accessory building containing an ADU shall comply with the applicable standards for accessory buildings, so three-foot side yard setback, all of the other things that apply to garages today. Building height, the maximum height for detached accessory structure containing an approved ADU shall be 17 feet. We talked earlier and approved earlier the change from 18 to 15 feet for accessory buildings. And the part of the reason for that going down to 15 feet is so that you can't create these second stories. 15 feet, you can create a loft, you can create space to do art or pottery or something that's a hobby of yours. You can have a bonus room to go play poker with your buddies above the garage. But with a 15-foot height, it's not going to be tall enough for you to feel comfortable living in there. So, recognizing that, if an ADU is approved, we allow it to go up to 17 feet, which allows you to create enough space to make it comfortable and desirable, I guess, living space. Parking, a minimum of three off-street parking spaces have to be provided on-site with at least one space specifically assigned to the accessory dwelling unit. Excuse me. Garage spaces can't be counted towards that minimum parking, so they have to have, they can't be putting all of their cars on the street and starting to create some more of those parking issues. Owner occupancy, one of the dwelling units has to be owner-occupied, and it has to have been so for at least 12 months preceding the date of application to create an accessory dwelling unit. And if the parcel ceases to be owner-occupied, the accessory dwelling unit may no longer be occupied. So, this is the case where we don't want to create a situation where we have two rentals, just doubling up on our renter load. We want the owner of the property to be there, to be a caretaker, and to basically have a vested interest in making sure that their renter is acting in a civil and good manner. So, that's the point of that. Separate meter, we require that the ADU have a separate water meter tied to the city water main. Our trump card in all of this, in all of the enforcement, is being able to shut off the water to the accessory dwelling unit, and we want to be able to make sure that we can do that if all of the other enforcement mechanisms fail, and we have a problem that can't be resolved by any of the other matters available to us, we can always shut off the water. And we talk about enforcement later on, but basically what would happen is, well, we'll talk about that later on. Bedroom minimum, a maximum of two bedrooms are permitted within an ADU, and occupancy limited to no more than two persons. Landlord license, property owner has to register this as a rental unit, so that they can enter our rental inspection program, just like we always would. Leasing or rental of the ADU for tenancies of less than 180 days shall be prohibited, and the property owner shall submit signed copies of the lease agreement indicating such to the city. Restrictive covenant, we would require restrictive covenant, the form of which shall be approved by the city attorney. Then, that is enforceable by the city, shall be recorded prior to the issuance of a building permit, stipulating that the ADU may be not conveyed separately from the primary dwelling unit, and that it may be occupied only if the owner of the parcel is an occupant of the principal or accessory dwelling unit. The purpose for this is because the person who builds the accessory dwelling unit knows about all of these requirements that come along with it. Now, when they decide to sell the property and someone looks at it, people tend to look and go, "Oh, cool, two dwelling units," and just think that they can do whatever they want. This will show up in the chain of title. This will make sure that everyone who buys the property is well aware of the responsibilities that come along with the right of having the accessory dwelling unit. And then finally, enforcement, this lays out all of the things that the city can do to enforce the ordinance should there be any violations, such as notifying the property owner of a requirement to show cause why the approval for the ADU shall not be revoked or modified. And if the city thinks that there's cause to revoke, it would schedule a hearing, or the public hearing, before the planning commission to reconsider the approval for that ADU. We could require additional periodic inspections of the property, this would be more of a maintenance question. Suspend water service to the ADU following the expiration of the term of any then-existing lease agreement, until such time as the property owner can demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the ordinance. So, if we find that the owner of the property's moved out, and they're now renting to two people, we say, "Okay, fine, we don't want to kick anyone out, you know, out of their lease term." They sign that lease term, we'll honor that, but as soon as that's over, we're shutting off the water to the accessory dwelling unit, so it won't be habitable. And of course, we'll put that on our list of properties to check out for continued enforcement. But, you know, that's a real concern, to prevent this proliferation from rentals. And then, of course, the planning commission, if they determine that the provision of the subsection has been violated, the planning commission can revoke or modify the accessory dwelling unit approval. And if revoked, the improvements added to convert the accessory structure to an accessory dwelling unit have to be removed within 45 days of the planning commission's decision. And then, they could also stipulate that the lot is not permitted to have an ADU for some specified period of time. Could be indefinitely. We don't know. That's up to the planning commission. So, that's the overview of all the specific standards. I know that this is a big question, so I wanted to go through all of those in detail, and you'll hear it again next month.
Appreciate it.
So, sorry that you'll hear it again, but I wanted to introduce all of those, and particularly just because if there is more information you wanted on any of these items, so that we can provide you what you need. I just wanted to make sure that we had good, clear discussion of that. So, that's the overview of the ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Please let me know in discussion. The motion you need to make is just to schedule a public hearing at this point for next month.
No, I just wanted to make a comment. I appreciate the detail, and I also appreciate the fact that I think in all my attendance at planning commission meetings, this is probably, I've seen more people engaged around the discussion of ADUs. There's been a lot of discussion, the planning commission's been very much engaged in this, so it hasn't been just the city manager coming up with it. So, I really appreciate the attention to detail in this, because it is very important. And obviously, it's something that people fear very strongly about, and we need to have, you know, we need to have very set ordinance, so.
I would be completely remiss if I neglected to mention that the planning commission does, of course, recommend ordinances to you, and the planning commission recommended denial of the ordinance to prohibit, and they recommended approval of the ordinance that would allow for this in certain instances. So, the planning commission's gone on record saying they're in favor of allowing for accessory dwelling units with these protections and stipulations. So, that is their recommendation to you.
Great. Is there a motion to approve, or approve the setting of a public hearing? May I move that a public hearing to solicit comments on the proposed ordinances to amend chapter 26 zoning of the Pleasant Ridge City Code regarding accessory dwelling units be established on Tuesday, January 13, 2015, at 7:30 PM? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes.
Mayor, may I ask the city manager, would we be able to get numbers from you on how many, you know, right now, you're looking at a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size. Would you be able to give us numbers for how many properties that would affect, like, that could potentially build them, but then also maybe 7,000-square-foot size lots?
Yeah, we can do that. You know, we've got GIS now. We might even be able to make a map.
Really? See, that would be even better.
No promises.
Thank you.
I'll see what we can do.
Very cool.
But certainly, the numbers, yes, we can pull those.
Now, I know one of the issues with, one of the cons with this, I mean, the con list really concerns me a lot with this, and I appreciate all of the stipulations you've built into, you know, that you've put restrictive, you know, elements into the ordinance, but, you know, there is, for neighbors, there's a loss of privacy and everything in their backyards as well, because with an extra tenant there, and then just traffic and all of that, and parking. But, so, and right now, we know, like, Huntington Woods and Birmingham don't allow them, right?
Yeah, I mean, they don't, although Birmingham seems to have a lot of these that have gotten built.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I don't know how that is, but that is the case.
And then Royal Oak allows them with, like, for an elderly relative to live in the...
Royal Oak allows for them, but they have put such restrictive provisions in place that when I talk to Royal Oak, nobody has actually done this. Because the amount of money it costs to build one of these out, and then Royal Oak requires that when that elderly resident no longer lives there, for whatever reason, all of that has to be taken away.
Ah.
So...
So, they're pretty restricted, too.
Yes, they absolutely are.
And then, now, I know there have been some different discussions about a five-foot setback or a three-foot setback from, is this from the backyard setback?
Yes, that was actually discussed at the planning commission. So, the issue is that accessory buildings, garages, have to be set back three feet from a property line.
Okay.
So, the minimum side yard setback for a house is five feet. So, when I initially brought this forward to the planning commission, I had a setback requirement of five feet for an accessory dwelling unit, with the logic being that, well, this is a dwelling unit, so it should be subject to the same setback as a principal dwelling unit. The planning commission had some concerns about that, because existing garages could be retrofitted to accommodate these. So, they, it was their decision to recommend forward the ordinance, going back to that three-foot setback requirement. Now, you know, there is a middle ground that we could look at, which would be, any new construction would have to be five feet, and retrofitting of an existing garage could be allowed by the planning commission to be three feet. We could build that in the ordinance. That's an option. You know, however you want to go on that, it's really up to you. And as a special land use, the planning commission could put additional conditions on anything that comes before them as well, because it is a discretionary decision. So, but of course, that's an if come, we don't know what happened there. So, yes, simple answer to your question, there was discussion about that setback.
The, I know, you know, some people have had the thought of, well, why do we need to have an ordinance for this? It's never been a huge issue in the past, and so why do we want to address it now? And it seems like it is becoming a more popular option out there, and so, you know, with, I mean, there are even TV shows, but also some people, like, fleeing from the city. It's like people want to get closer, so it's like, it seems like something that we're going to have to address more and more.
The demand is clearly there. I mean, I know of at least... I mean, I know of at least three examples of these that have recently been built, that are habitable. And that's just been in the past, I think, what, two years?
Thank you. Well, thank you for doing that extra work, but also, the ordinance is, there are a lot of, you know, restrictive aspects to it that help, I think, make it, you know, so it wouldn't change the character, hopefully, of the community drastically.
Mr. Mayor, a couple more questions to touch on. Commissioner Perry, some of the things that she asked about. So, you'll be producing a list of properties, 5,000 feet in the city, 6,000, 7,000, or is it a full breakdown? What do we...
I'll have to, I'll have to look at the data that we have and see what I can do.
Okay.
But I'll provide something.
Okay. Because I'd be interested in the number, say, for what we are looking at now with 5,000-foot. What's the percentage of those? And then, say, 7,000 feet, maybe six and eight, somewhere, just, you know, give or take. Next question touched on the level of demand. I know you said we have three already. Are you getting requests for more? Do you hear about plans for more? What's your perception of the current demand in Pleasant Ridge for these?
You know, I mean, like anything here, it comes and goes. We're a fairly small community, so these things tend to come in waves. You know, you'll get three, and then you won't hear about them for a couple of years, and then you'll get three more. So, I don't know what the likelihood is, if you're asking of, you know, what, would we be seeing 14 requests for these before the Planning Commission? I don't know. All I know is we've had three, and we're in a bad spot now, so we want to know what to do in the future.
Okay. Final comment is just on the flexibility that you proposed where it could possibly be tailored to be at the three-foot requirement. I think that was from the rear property line, is that what you said? That a garage would normally have...
Side and rear property line is three feet.
Three foot for existing and perhaps five foot for new construction. That flexibility would be good, but we'll see when we get there. Thank you.
Mayor, please. I believe you actually sent me a breakdown, but prior to November 10th, I don't have access on my iPad, so you may already have the work done.
Okay. Of the, of the square footage?
Yes, I asked the question in early November, but I don't have the email here.
Right.
Secondly, is there a minimum garage height requirement?
Minimum?
Yes.
No.
Okay. I'm asking because I could imagine sacrificing garage to build a second story and meet the 50-foot requirement, and create a livable space.
Right. And then, we don't want that either, because, you know...
Yes, it's just a consideration for the ordinance. Not that I would do it personally, but I might do it personally.
What's up with it?
You might. Convertibles.
If you sold the house, you'd have to sell it as a convertible only.
Exactly. The notion is that by, typical, you would typically build the first floor to be at least a minimum of eight feet with a seven-foot garage door, which would leave only seven feet to build the second story, which could be a poker room or what have you. So, if you lowered the height of the first floor to make more room on a second floor to make it livable, you could still park cars, but not necessarily...
See, at that point, you know, there is interpretation and administrative discretion involved, and at that point, you know, I start to say, "This is no longer an accessory dwelling or accessory building," because you have something that's not usable as a garage.
Yes.
So, you know, if you say you're building an accessory, you know, I don't know. I shouldn't say too much with our attorney here.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kryzak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Mr. Perry, we will have a public hearing in January. All right. We have heard a lot from you already, Jim, but now it's time for your city managers to report if you have anything else.
This one, I'll make this one real short. Permit parking, we already talked about that update. Commissioner Perry touched on the capital improvement plan. This is the precursor to the budget season for anyone who's not aware of what this is, but the first thing you do is, it's required by state law, you do a six-year plan for capital improvements, and that's anything over $10,000 that the city needs to do. So, basically, we program when we need to replace our police cars, when we need, when we're planning on redoing roads. And the idea behind this is in a larger city, where one hand doesn't always know what the other hand is doing, you find out that, "Oh, well, we're planning on repaving that road, and we're planning on, water department is planning on rebuilding that water main, and the water main replacement is scheduled for two years after you rebuild the road. Well, maybe we should do this all at once." Pleasant Ridge, we don't really have that issue since the three of us can see each other and talk to each other every day in the office, but we have to do a capital improvements plan, and so let's do a good one. So, we called for projects for the Planning Commission DDA, you know, what they wanted to, what they had been thinking, or projects that they might have been seeing. I emailed that also to all the city commissioners, if you have any projects you think are out there. But it's a mechanical process, and then we know, you know, six years out, what our budgeting needs are for what we need to be setting money aside for, which is upcoming. And then, of course, every year during budget season, the city commission will look at the list of projects that are slated for the upcoming year and decide if we can do all of them, if we can't do all of them, which ones are our higher priorities. And then, next year, those projects that don't get done, just, you know, get kicked to the next budget year in the CIP. It's a, it's a, well, a living, breathing document. That's really it, the master plan. Yeah, comments are back. The Planning Commission will review and schedule a public hearing. That'll probably happen in January, so be aware that the master plan is coming up for public hearing. And other than that, I hope that everybody has a very safe and happy holiday season, whatever it is you're celebrating, and we'll see you next year.
Happy holidays. One day.
That's just my sign-off.
I was just going to ask that you could celebrate the Oakland Park Ridge redo on the, I heard it went successfully. It was wonderful.
Yes. Yeah, we're glad to have that done, man. Anyone who drove by Oakland Park and Ridge probably saw the bowl. It was starting to form in the intersection. We had some sewers that had shifted over time. They were 90 years old, and they shifted, and they were starting to get sand infiltration, which is degrading the subbase anyways. So, we were, we had a sinkhole that was growing, so we got to it in time. We got that fixed. We had a hard time finding good bids on that. We had some come in at $80,000 to redo that work. It was ridiculous. So, we worked with our engineers, and we managed and located a company, a very reputable company, who does this work regularly, but we got it done for around $20,000.
It's really amazing.
Yeah, so, I mean...
From the outside, it's...
Tremendous. We were real worried about running up against, you know, winter and getting it done, but, you know, we stayed on it, and so, yeah, we're happy, and I think the patching looks good. You know, ridge is asphalt, and so the asphalt plants were closed, so we couldn't re-asphalt ridge. We had the concrete in, but really, it was a very good job. You know, there's not a lot of elevation difference or anything. There's not a lot of bumps, so it seems to be working.
Seattle looks in February.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks to you guys, and thanks to the engineer for coming up with, yeah, a good solution.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to ruin your happy holiday comment by adding roads, but, so you can always say that at the end.
At this time of season, we're thankful for our information.
Thanks, okay. The last item is any other business? Who's on the front? Yes?
Yes, a quick one. On, going back to item 11, we requested a second legal opinion, but cannot set a maximum dollar amount on that legal opinion. I propose that we probably should do so. I can't recall, we had some conversation on what it might cost to get a second opinion, but I suggest we cap it.
Right. I mean, my estimate would be, depending on the rate of the attorney we find, you know, three to six hours, I would guess. Greg, do you think that's fair?
I, from what I recall from the initial work, that would be right in the ballpark.
Okay. So, for three to six hours for an attorney at an undetermined rate, you know, anywhere between $500 and $1,200 is probably what we're looking at to get that opinion.
So, we set, excuse me, so if we set a maximum of $1,500, we should be well... Okay.
Absolutely.
Does that require a motion?
No, I just won't do it.
Okay.
If the ask comes back. I'll find someone else.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to take a few moments and introduce the next selection for the book club. In the spirit of commemoration of I-696, I'm really excited about the Historical Commission's event on January 15th with the speaker series. I think that's going to be a really fun event. This one, I hope to piggyback that interest. The name of this book is Divided Highways: Building the Interstate Highways, Transforming American Life. This is exactly about the issues that this community went through with the 696 construction. And if I could, I just want to read this real quick and pique some interest, hopefully. This is from the jacket. "Here is one of the great untold tales of American enterprise recounted entirely through the stories of the human beings who thought up, mapped out, poured, paved, and tried to stop the interstates. Conceived and spearheaded by Thomas the Chief McDonald, the iron-willed bureaucrat from the muddy farmlands of Iowa who rose to unrivaled power, the highway system was propelled forward through the path-breaking efforts of brilliant engineers argued over by politicians of every ideological and moral stripe, reviled by the citizens whose lives it devastated and lauded as the greatest public works project in U.S. history." So, I think that fits very well with the themes of the Historical Commission event, and I'd welcome anyone interested in that to check out this book and join us for discussion on Wednesday, January 21st, at 7:30 at the Community Center. We'll be discussing Divided Highways by Tom Lewis. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.